The Plymouth Township Planning Commission will come to order at 7:00. Secretary, please call roll.
Kendra Barberina is here. Dennis Sobolski.
Here.
Jim Harp.
Here.
John Idsel.
Here.
Fabio Dreschewicz.
Here.
Keith Postel.
Here.
Bill Pratt.
Here.
And do we have a motion to approve this evening's agenda? I have no additions or deletions.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve as submitted.
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Pratt and supported by Commissioner Barberina to approve this evening's agenda as submitted. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And are there any additions or corrections to the meeting of November 14?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve as submitted.
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Pratt and supported by Commissioner Barberina to approve the November 14 minutes as submitted. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And are there any additions or corrections to the work session meeting of November 29?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve as submitted.
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Pratt and supported by Commissioner Barberina to approve the work session meeting minutes of November 29. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is a public hearing, application number 2316-1218, the text amendment to Article 22 of the zoning ordinance, the single-family cluster housing. And Ms. Howe, your report.
Thank you, Commissioners. This agenda item references Article 22 of the Township Zoning Ordinance, which pertains to single-family residential cluster housing. And as you'll recall, cluster housing options are a flexible development tool that's available to the township, similar, very similar to planned unit developments, except that this is strictly for residential units. And as you recall, this past year, we spent considerable time updating the Planned Unit Development Ordinance to add some additional considerations that safeguard the township, to streamline the process, and add clarity to the public and developers. And the Cluster Housing Ordinance has undergone a similar review and recommendations included in your packet is Article 22. All new text is shown with red underline. And obsolete, redundant, or ineffective provisions have been stricken with a black strike through. Some of this language is very similar to the process language that was used for the PUD, which has been already reviewed by the Township Attorney and is in line with those provisions. If there's any specific questions related to Article 22, I'm happy to answer them. We do need to have a public hearing this evening, an opening, close it to the public. And then the next step is a recommendation to the Township Board of Trustees for consideration of the text amendment. That would be in conjunction with a full review by the Township Attorney. He does have this draft amendment and is in the process of finalizing the review. Thank you.
Okay. So we'll open the public hearing at 7:05. Is there anyone here from the public that wishes to comment on this proposal? Hearing done. We will close the public hearing at 7:06. And discussion amongst the commission. Questions, concerns?
Mr. Chairman, I have two. First of all, this, the presentation is focused, at least from what I see here, on a site that is just south of the church on, what is that, Ridge?
Ridge and North Territorial.
Ridge and North Territorial. However, I'm wondering, Laura, how many other sites do you think this change would be applicable to in the township?
I do think that the cluster housing option is available as a development tool to many parcels in the township, especially as we move towards the west end of the township. That's not to say that a cluster housing option would be right for any parcel in the township. I think that the provisions that are presented in the ordinance would give the township additional safeguards for making that determination. And it's also important to note that, right now, our zoning ordinance has a separate article for residential development called RUDs, the Residential Unit Development. And this is an older section of the ordinance that pertains to parcels that are 40 acres or greater. And that ordinance is really not serving the township anymore because there are so few, if any, parcels that are 40 acres or greater still in the township.
I can't think of any.
That that could be applied to, right?
Yeah.
So this ordinance will allow, kind of step into that position and allow for quality development throughout.
Then, fine, thank you. I just was interested in that. Specific to, as I pointed out to Laura and Dennis earlier, if you go to page eight of 12, item number five on page eight of 12, it's changing the number of attached units available from four to six. But then if you go over to page nine of 12, that table says nothing about items of six or greater than four units. So I pointed out to Laura that I thought that that table needs to be fixed in some fashion. And your suggestion was four or greater at the bottom of it?
Yes.
Which is fine with me because I can't envision a greater expanse between clusters than 40 feet. I can't imagine anybody thinking that would be a good idea. So anyway, I point that out to the commission and if the commission exceeds, I think we need to change some language on the very last item in that table to four or greater number of units. Then going over to page 10 of 12, excuse me, you're changing, in 10A, you're changing the percentage of brick or stone work from 40 to 60. Is there a particular reason why you think that's a good idea?
So this change was initiated because in Article 28 of our zoning ordinance, for all non-single-family structures, we require 70% of masonry materials or greater. So it doesn't quite match, I think, the intended result at only 40%. I will say that most developments that we see are, you know, 90 or similar percent masonry materials on single-family units, although we have seen, I think, one or two developments proposed that don't quite meet those standards. So this is at the commission's discretion, if you'd like to leave it at the existing 40 or increase it similar to other provisions in the ordinance?
Well, refresh my memory, what is the standard on a single-family home?
If it were to just be, I went out and built my own home.
Right.
There is no standard.
There is no standard. Well, I just opened that up for discussion of the other commissioners. And then the last item is the item D on that same 10. And I'm trying to figure out residential facades may not be dominated by garages. I'm not sure what that means. It doesn't, it's pretty, from my perspective, a vague item. I'm not sure, does that, the idea of that is to leave that up to the discretion of the commission or, I'm not sure why. I just don't, I don't know why I like that language.
That would be up to the discretion of the commission. I think it carries a recommendation that the garage should not be 50% or greater of the front facade. That would be the majority dominating the front of the unit. And that's not the type of product that is consistent with best practices in neighborhood design.
So wouldn't it be a better idea, rather than leaving it vague, to put some kind of standard, percentage standard in there?
If the commission is comfortable with seeing 50%, that would include the ability to do side-loaded garages or a garage half the, occupying half the width of the front facade.
Okay. Well, again, I'll leave that item up for further discussion with the other commission members. It just, it just doesn't, I just don't like the vagueness of that clause particularly. Those, all I have, Ms. Trum.
Ms. Dreschewicz.
I'm kind of puzzled, I guess. If you maybe walk me through this again, because I'm just, it's not really clicking that we're being asked to make modifications to this, or text amendment modifications to this ordinance at the request of the developer, so that the developer can move forward with a project that is inconsistent with the current ordinance, right? So the, how much of this text is text that you wrote because you think it's a best practice because the ordinance maybe, you know, is no longer relevant, given the fact that the nature of the township has changed? And which of these things were actually, because this would serve the developer? And I don't mean to, that to sound as cynical as it does, but which of these were at the request of the developer?
So this text amendment is applicant-initiated, which occurs in many communities, including other client communities of McCanus. And so it's something that we are very familiar with. And there's, you know, there's always the intent of the developer that's requesting the change. But I would say that this request has been a partnership. Coming into the township and working here the past year and a half, I've definitely experienced challenges applying the zoning ordinance. And I think in many cases, we've had to apply for a rezoning, a developer has had to apply for a rezoning, in order to successfully apply the cluster housing option and to move forward with a development proposal. And I think that's kind of one red flag, that saying this ordinance isn't quite working for us. And then in applying this to other projects that we've done, you know, I do wish that there were stronger standards that were in the best interest of the township. And also that the process is streamlined, because we receive a lot of questions here at the township administratively on the application of a cluster housing. So the developers' request, the applicant's request for this ordinance was density-related, but they have been a great partner in being open to any recommendations that would improve this ordinance going forward. Does that help, Commissioner Dreschewicz?
It helps a little. Yeah, I kind of get that. It just seems to be reacting to this particular project. But the provisions that you've, that you've redlined and asked for changes to, what are the things in there that you've asked for changes to because you just think it's a better practice or a best practice versus things that are, you know, specifically requested by the applicant because the applicant needs that in order to move their project forward?
I would say most of the provisions that are redlined in this text amendment are from the township's planning department, following best practices that we see in other ordinances. This ordinance in particular, at least hasn't been updated since 2007 and probably before then. So it's not quite on par with providing that sense of community and neighborhood identity, but also the larger recognizable benefit to the township for utilizing this development tool. And I hope that these recommendations will achieve that. But also allow developers who want to produce a quality project in the township, the ability to do so and to provide housing for certain demographics, like aging-in-place seniors.
You didn't answer my question.
Specific to the provisions?
Yeah, I just.
The developer.
I'm trying to understand what we're giving up.
Well, I think that one of the significant changes is that the Planning Commission would have the ability to allow density modifications to the established density table. That the density table that corresponds to the zoning districts of the single-family residential districts, that is not proposed to change. What is proposed to change is the Planning Commission may allow a density bonus for exemplary projects. That would be at your discretion. And that is currently not in the ordinance today, but is very common in other cluster housing or open space communities across Michigan.
Yeah, that's actually what kind of troubles me a little, is that, you know, exemplary. My exemplary may not be your exemplary.
That is why a lot of these additional provisions that have been redlined are added. Because if just that one section was changed to allow for Planning Commission discretion and nothing else in the ordinance was adjusted, then I would say that's not doing a service to the township and not doing a service to this board. But by having these additional provisions in there that are very similar on par with what other communities require and use as evaluation criteria, then I think you're allowing more creative, flexible development, but not at the cost to the community. The process, I should add this to you, the process for a cluster housing option still will remain the same in terms of the number of reviews and public touches that the process will go through. So there will still be the public hearing at the onset, there'll be review by the Planning Commission for the option, review by the Board of Trustees, then site plan, preliminary and final by the Planning Commission, and then back to the Board of Trustees again. So there's a lot of opportunity for feedback, for evaluation loops, and for the public to comment and weigh in. So if that process were to be changed as part of this, that's not something that, you know, I could professionally stand behind.
So Laura, would you say that the big change here really is the density bonus, then? Because going over the other changes, they seem kind of on par with, I guess, other applications that we've had, others, like a PUD?
Yeah, so I think that's a good parallel, is the provisions in here are similar to, you know, all the efforts and enhancements we made to the PUD ordinance. And just thinking of the first project that went through the PUD ordinance, the hillside residences at the former Courthouse Grill, I think we've seen how successful that application has been. At least from a planning perspective, that application has gotten much further with the new PUD ordinance than it would have under the old provisions. It's a much stronger quality development for the township at the end of the day. So you'll be seeing those provisions reflected in this cluster housing option as well.
Ms. Harp?
There seems to be a lot of, when you talk about the hillside project, that area has a lot of similar density. When you look at Starkweather Lofts and you look at some of the other projects that are in that area, where this site doesn't necessarily have that demographic. And when Commissioner Pratt said, well, he can't think of any 40-acre parcels, there's one directly southeast of it, which is where Miller's Woods is, that's a 40-acre parcel that's owned by the schools, that I would say suggests they'll never build on. So it's in their land bank and somebody's going to buy it one day down the line and develop it. So if we set a precedence here, then that gives some light to this parcel as well. So we have to, I think, think of that in some vein, that it is, the close proximity is, you can't get much closer. And the only thing more dense would be those condos at Ridge and Territorial. But all of this is high-end, upper-scale, single-family. And I don't know, when you're that dense, that concerns me a little bit, the density does.
Yes, Commissioner Postel.
Yeah, in the past, when we've talked about cluster housing and things, the emphasis has always been on what value is added. And people have taken, not really increased the densities as much as they are by preserving landscaping and a barrier around the development. And I think we've always been opposed to the cluster housing option merely being something that is a technique to cram more houses in a space, rather than more effectively use that space. So, you know, increasing the density isn't really the issue for me, it's making better use of the space. How, in all the changes you've made in there, how do you prevent that or how do you encourage that kind of thinking in here, rather than just getting more dwellings in a space?
Well, I think to start, and that's a good question, but to start, this has stronger eligibility criteria. So from the infancy of any project consideration, there are stronger evaluation criteria that will allow the commission and the board to determine that. Whereas before, it was rather vague. And environmental features or any historic structures on the site weren't necessarily considered to the full extent that they could be. It also didn't consider the pedestrian or necessarily the surrounding zoning and layout of adjacent, single-family properties. So even though this is a discretionary provision, the Planning Commission and the board, you know, is of course charged with understanding a development in its own context. So it's difficult to kind of talk about this in a vacuum. But when this would be applied, you would of course take a look at adjacencies and make sure that the density that was proposed would be compatible with the surrounding land uses. So something like the hillside residences would not be appropriate on Ridge Road or on Beck Road. But it would give the commission the flexibility to allow maybe a little bit more dense proposal that has additional benefits that outweigh that density for the betterment of the township.
What are those additional benefits?
Well, there's stronger landscaping setback, the, if there's a historical structure or significant architecture on a site, consideration of pedestrians, open space amenities, recreation amenities, not just natural open space, but usable open space. And there's provisions in here for not just the end users of the property, but ultimately the township as a whole does a benefit. So there's some examples. Stronger architectural guidelines.
Yes, Commissioner Postel.
You talked about discretionary bonus. Is that language contained in this charter or in this amendment?
I believe it's on page 10. Let me see. I'm sorry, page 11. There's already a provision for Planning Commission modifications where the Planning Commission can vary the amount of water body that can be used in the density calculation, but it doesn't necessarily, if there is no water body on the site, then that doesn't apply. So this additional text in red would allow for the Planning Commission to consider what would be permitted under traditional zoning. So of course, with any application, the developer would have to prepare a parallel plan that would show under the existing zoning, how many lots, how many units would be acceptable on the site. So let's say there were 15 acceptable units on the site and they're proposing 20. Those additional five units, then, outside of the permitted density, would be considered the density bonus. And you would evaluate their proposal with these ordinance provisions to see if it surpassed the ordinance criteria or not for an exemplary project. As an example, for some of these zoning district corresponding densities, the property here that's shown on your cover sheet, that's approximately 24 acres. If a cluster housing option were applied to that site with today's zoning ordinance provisions, only 18 units would be permitted. And that necessarily isn't, because those 18 units are so spread out on the parcel, it's not necessarily conserving a natural resource or creating more of a pocket neighborhood where neighbors feel close-knit. It's not necessarily advancing the township in that respect, other than it's a little bit smaller lots than what would be there. And I think that's part of the fact that this ordinance is from 2007 at least. And it doesn't reflect kind of those changing neighborhoods and understanding the different demographics that are at play. So for an aging-in-place neighborhood, you would want the houses closer together and for them to feel a sense of community in that area.
So Laura, how many dwelling units could be on that parcel with the modifications to this amendment?
That would be at the Planning Commission's discretion, knowing, I haven't seen a parallel plan for this site. But just applying the corresponding zoning density, it would be 18 units, I believe.
But the density bonus, what would be the max that we could do?
There isn't a maximum standard. In the PUD, it's 25 dwelling units an acre, which is quite a lot. There's certainly the opportunity to issue a cap, a maximum density, that would be permitted. Most township or city or Most, most township or city or village ordinances don't have a, a maximum number of units.
I have another question. You can see it on the map here in the top northwest corner. There's another property that's come to us in the past for a cluster option and a part of the property is a pond. So how would this tax amendment impact a project like that since it has a significant water feature?
It would be at the discretion of the planning commission if they were to consider that part of the overall acreage for the calculation. Currently, the planning commission already has that discretion. You can, you can choose to include the water body acreage or you can choose to exclude it from your density calculation.
Other questions or concerns?
I guess from my perspective, again, I don't see it as a opportunity to increase density, but to increase the use of the land. And it, it, it kind of bothers me if, if, if you're not doing something with the extra land that really enhances the, the community, the mini-community that you're creating, that they'd be better off going for rezoning and, and trying to get the higher density that way. But just, just to put more units on there because they're appealing to people that want smaller lawns, let's say, and, and less work, but without, without providing the, the more natural setting, which is what people have come to us with. And they said, their customers want that, so they want to take the same number of units, shrink them down and have a, a good quality of surrounding area. And, and this almost seems like it'll, it'll invite the technique of just putting more units on the given property.
But that doesn't exclude the possibility of a developer who does bring to the township a, a quality proposal that can accommodate additional smaller units in the same footprint that would be occupied just by additional unusable lawn area. Correct?
Yes, it could be meaningful or meaningless, you know, on the kinds of things they're putting in. What would be, even though I haven't, I'm not familiar with the RUD wording and things, suppose there was no limitation or the high limitation of 40 acres on the RUD and you just lowered that down, would that accomplish what you were after?
I don't believe so, because I think a lot of the provisions, we, if we were to lower that acreage requirement, we would still want to update the ordinance to add some additional provisions for the safety of the township. We may want to.
Anyone else?
I have a couple of comments myself. On the facade materials, going back to that, I like the idea of the 60%. In fact, I would even have it at 70 or 75 myself because I think that lends to the quality of product that we would want to see, given these other provisions here and what we're trying to accomplish. The same goes with the, sort of the vagueness or lack of a specific metric for the domination of a garage door. More of the upscale homes have side-entry garages, for example, and I think there could be even some creative things done with garage doors. I've seen that almost looked like part of the house too, but I wouldn't want the garage to, you know, you know, you look, go down the street and you see a front door and maybe a window and then this huge garage door. And then another comment that I would have on page five of 12, under section 22.6. So here you see that when this goes to the township board, the decision and the basis for that decision should be recorded in the meeting minutes. That provision doesn't exist in whatever decision that the planning commission sends over to the board of trustees. So I think that similar language should be up there so that the trustees can be guided or better understand the rationale for either an approval or a denial. So I would recommend that addition.
I think that's a great idea. I have it noted.
Any other concerns or questions or comments?
Well, I, I just have one and, and it is concerning this density bonus or whatever you want to call it. I think the, the planning commission, and I think it's relatively, or it's relevant, actually exercised a, its ability to do this already in the reverse side. When you look at the, the piece of, the parcel on, on Beck Road and formerly called Edinburgh Estates, and these folks came in with, I forget now, eight or six or something like that, huge buildings, or was it four, huge buildings that they wanted to put on that. And we said, no, that's, that's not in character with the, with the surrounding parcels. And so they came back and, and came up with, I think it turned out to be 11 or 12, 13, I don't remember how many, units, individual units rather than these huge buildings. So I, I think that that's, at least from my perspective, that's what this, this ordinance is, ordinance change is trying to reflect, is it's trying to give the planning commission discretion to look at the development and see if it does indeed fit with the surrounding properties that, that the developer has and, and that if that, if, if it, if there are too many, then why not Mr. Developer give us some additional, much as we tried to do with Edinburgh Estates, the.
Verona Park.
Verona Park, is that what it's called now?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry about that, Verona Park. You know, give us some amenities that could, could service the, the new residents. So I, you know, I don't, I don't know that, that it's, it's intended to allow people just to cram more in. I think it's allowing the planning commission flexibility in, in making that determination.
I would agree. I think this gives a wide discretion of the planning commission to help ensure, it puts a greater onus and responsibility on this group to be sure that we get a quality product for what we may be giving up in density.
Yeah, that's my thought process, exactly. And, and I don't have any, any problem with that. And that's the reason we have a planning commission is, of, made up of township residents from varying backgrounds that permit it to, to try to reflect at any rate the overall township population.
Okay, last comments, last opportunity here. Okay, well, are we ready for a motion?
All right, I'll make one. Mr. Chairman, I move that we recommend approval of the amendments to Article 22, I'm sorry, yeah, 22, as presented to us this evening with the conditions that, that the table on page nine properly reflect the number of potential units available and that on page 10, under item 10, Architectural Standards, that item D reflects a, a percentage that the garages cannot take up of the residential facade. And that percentage, I would say, should be 50% or less.
And what about the facade material? Chairman Sobolski had suggested 70%.
I, I would, I'm not unhappy with 60%.
Okay.
And what about the addition of section 22.6 to, page 22.5, that the commission?
Ah, that the, in, in addition on, in section 22.5, that the language be added similar to the language in section 22.6 as to conditions for the planning commission's recommendation.
Okay, is there support?
Support.
Move by Commissioner Pratt and supported by Commissioner Barbaraina recommending approval with set exceptions of Application 2316-1218 to the Board of Trustees. All in favor, signify by saying a aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Opposed.
Okay, opposed was Commissioner Pastel and Dorchevitz. But, okay, but the motion does carry. Next is Application 2315-118, and that is the Jersey Mike's signage. And there was a handout also at our place that relates to this, so. There's one moment. So Ms. Howell, your report?
Thank you. The application before you is for two new wall signs at the existing Esco Square Commercial Plaza for a New Jersey Mike's establishment. We've seen many wall sign applications at this plaza within the, the past, I would say, eight months. And this is a welcome addition. The applicant has provided a revised sign plan based on the comments in this review letter, which is at your seat and also on the screen. So in terms of the size requirements, the applicant has revised the sign facing Sheldon Road now within the allowable square footage. So number one on page one of the review has been addressed and is in compliance. Both the signs are in compliance with the maximum height. Two signs are proposed and permitted. The ordinance provides that one wall sign shall be permitted on each facade which has a multi, or, excuse me, which has a separate public means of egress. And then an additional provision, as this just has one method of egress onto An, Sheldon Road, there's an additional provision in the ordinance that says, in case of a tenant located in a corner space in a multi-tenant structure, which is this commercial plaza, one additional wall sign shall be permitted on each facade which has separate, separate pedestrian access. And it is certainly true that individuals walking from any of the neighborhoods from the west would be approaching this facility and would look to the building as to what establishment is there from Sheldon Road. And very similar, any vehiculars driving down Sheldon Road would be looking to the plaza if they were, they're seeking this location. And so the intent of that is, is met. Number four deals with a sign projection from the face of the wall. This has been noted on the plans and both signs are in compliance with that maximum projection. And then the last item, number five, has to do with panel signage. And this is something that we've talked about in various instances along the art corridor. So the sign that's facing Ann Arbor Road is proposed as freestanding individual letters and that's what we like to see, that's what the ordinance requires. But there is a provision that, you know, recognizes certain company logos and, and company brands may not be able to adhere to the freestanding letters. And in this case, I believe Jersey Mike's is requesting that waiver to their sign along Sheldon Road, which contains more of their, their brand logo for the company. And so it's up to the planning commission to make that discretionary waiver and either permit or not permit the proposed sign along Sheldon Road as it stands today. Other than that, the applicant, the revised sign package adheres to our ordinance standards.
I'm going to ask you to come up to the podium because the meetings are recorded and there's a mic there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's okay. So did you have any comment, reaction to what was just read and issued?
Yeah.
Well, first, your name?
My name is Peter Chitman. I'm local franchisee here with Jersey Mike's. Born and raised in this area, in Ann Arbor. And my mom went to Plymouth High School, so I've, I've been in and around this area a long time. And, and actually, my grandparents lived right behind Sheldon Road, so I've seen all that growth happen over all the years. What we're trying to do on our signage is be consistent with the center. And when I met with our sign company and looked at the elevation facing Sheldon, it's behind the Speedway, it's a narrower space there that sits in that fascia. And our traditional signage is Jersey Mike's Sub written out, so it's 15 letters. And given the narrow space there, we just didn't feel it was going to be consistent with the other letters. Next door, our next-door neighbors at Urgent Care, their letters are 21 inches. And on our south elevation, where we do have proposed channel letters, our letters range from 22 inches down to 13. So as narrow as we are in the Sheldon face, we would have really, really small letters next to Urgent Care. And I, I actually think it'd be really, really difficult to even read what was going on. And we certainly don't need people as they're approaching Ann Arbor Road and that Sheldon corner trying to read a sign. So we just, we felt like the logo was appropriate, it's distinctive, it's consistent with some of the other signage that's on the corridor. Speedway has some logo signage that's illuminated, not up on their, on their wall, but some of the other signage. Kroger has a monument sign that's a, a round oval similar to our logo. We think it's distinctive and it will be consistent and blend with the center really well.
Questions or comments? Are we ready for a motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Oh, go ahead, Keith. I'll make a motion to approve Application 2315-1118. We're sharing a microphone here. To allow the Ann Arbor Road sign as shown and as amended and the information we had tonight. tonight, and as far as the panel sign on the Sheldon side, that since that's the company logo, and it seems appropriate to approve that panel sign as requested.
Support?
Support.
Move by Commissioner Postel and supported by Commissioner Pratt to approve Application All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Well, good luck to you. Glad to see you in the community.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate your time and consideration.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
You don't have to stay and go if you want. You're welcome.
Next time, bring subs. You could make an evening out of it.
I won't do that.
No, that's okay.
No, no, no.
That's okay.
Please don't.
No. Next up is Application 2314. Well, they had the same application number as the one we just had. Didn't it? 23, oh, 2314, right, right, right. I was looking at the end. Yeah, 2314-1118, and that's the Fog Street new build. And we have additional information at our place as well for this one. So Ms. Howell, your report.
Yes, thank you. And just to note, I know that the application numbers on the new business are in reverse order. I did put the sign application first just because I thought that would be rather quick. Wanted to extend that courtesy to them. Actually, my counterpart here at the township, Jennifer Neal, is in attendance tonight. She'll be joining us at future meetings. And I'm sure that many of you have either corresponded with her via email or phone over the past several months. She's been helping out on a number of projects here at the township, and she will be presenting the Fog Street new build review tonight.
Good evening, commissioners. We have reviewed the above application, 2314, for tentative site plan approval. The applicant, Schaefer Construction, proposes to construct a single-story, 60,000-square-foot research and industrial facility for a speculative client. The subject property is a 4.09 acre site located on Fog Street, south of Five Mile, west of Sheldon, north of Helm. You can see a site plan located on the screen in front of you. The site is zoned industrial and surrounded by like-zone properties. The site is currently functioning as a parking lot for 45,000 Helm Street. The site is currently part of that address, and will, this project will require a lot split prior to final site plan approval. Going through the review, the project does meet all dimensional requirements. As you can see, we believe that the, as the site is currently a parking lot, we do believe that landscaping and environmental, aesthetical improvements will improve the functionality of the site and the aesthetics capacity. The, I'm just going to touch on some notable things in the review. The, and then I also wanted to touch on, the applicant has noted within their application they will be submitting additional items prior to site plan approval. So they have acknowledged, such as the exterior lighting plan, that these will be provided prior to site plan approval. But they have also provided an additional document that was emailed to you today, but also at your table in front of you, a response letter to the review comments that were provided, where they have acknowledged they will be including certain things in future plans. So we appreciate those comments, and we thank the applicant for responding so quickly. The recommendation before you is recommending tentative site plan approval. Prior to that determination by the planning commission, we do ask that you review the building and facade requirements. The materials proposed within the facade would require a waiver by the planning commission. This has been done for industrial properties in the past, but that is a determination that the planning commission should consider. However, additionally, we do feel that this project is ready for tentative site plan approval, and then we will work through additional items prior to final site plan approval with the applicant.
That's it? Okay, thank you. And Mr. Chitman, your engineering report.
Thank you, Commissioner. We have reviewed the above reference plan set received in our office in November 28 for conformance with the Plymouth Township engineering standards. We have some comments on here, but a lot of those comments are meant to help for final site plan approval, and the comments we have is nothing that's going to prevent tentative site plan approval, it's just mostly notes and housekeeping things that need to be addressed. So with that, we recommend approval of the tentative site plan, conditioned upon our comments being addressed to the satisfaction of the planning commission. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
And the fire department has issued their report, and a copy has been given to the applicant. The applicant is here. Want to step up and introduce yourselves?
Before they do that, Mr. Chairman, Dave, on your report, at least the one I have, says refer, above reference plan set dated February 13.
The date was incorrect. I caught that this evening when I was going through it.
Okay, so.
It was the incorrect dates that were.
Okay, what is the correct date?
I don't have the correct date with me for that one, the plan set.
Okay.
Just when we received it in our office.
Okay, thank you.
Did you get that, Bill?
Bill, did you get that?
November 19.
Right, 2018.
Thank you.
Okay, the floor is yours.
Good evening, I'm Matt Better with Schaefer Construction.
Jim Butler, PEA.
Okay. Well, we appreciate your response to the report. It seems like you really don't have any issues or questions regarding the report itself, that you've noted all of the things that are expected. Am I correct?
That's right.
Okay. So maybe you can talk a little bit about the facade and materials. That seems to be the big item that we need to consider.
So we're proposing a precast concrete.
If you can step closer to the mic.
These are recorded. We're proposing a precast concrete panel building.
If you can come a little closer so we can see it a little bit better. You can get further back.
The left, please.
Just watch the table behind you.
Just like anything else done by committee.
All right.
So it would be a painted, precast, concrete facade for the most part. Obviously, we have some aluminum curtain wall, low-e glazing, and then a modest canopy at the end. Thank you.
And the colors are as shown on the board here?
Yes, that's correct.
And it's a spec, it's a spec building?
Yep, that's correct, sir.
Any comments on the materials or colors, that kind of thing?
It's good.
Yeah, it does look good.
Commissioner, if I can just interject, the materials proposed on this building are very similar to, thank you, are very similar to the materials that were proposed and approved as part of Polytech's industrial building last year, I believe. We are recommending some minor adjustments to the building prior to final, including some additional openings and details on the north and east elevations. We see some opportunities for that, so that would be the, this elevation and then also this, I'm sorry, that looks granular.
So Laura, so what is it? Do you want more windows on this elevator, on this north elevation? Or, can you repeat it again?
Yes, I'm sorry. We're recommending some additional openings or details on these two facades. The facades that contain the office space near the front opening, there is a lot of transparency there with the glass features, the elevated windows, and that's a nice addition to Fog Street, and it's consistent with some of the other industrial buildings that we've seen. But just looking for a little more variation, especially along this facade, as it's quite expansive.
You're okay with that?
We're not opposed to that, within reason. The north side of the building is obviously very close to, I believe it's Rock Automotive or something of that sort. You're not going to be able to see very much of the north side of this building at all, but within reason, we can either add color to break it off or some.
Yeah, I think it, I mean, it's a huge expanse on the north side of that building, and it needs to, while I can appreciate it's blocked, according to what I saw anyway, it's blocked by the building that's on Five Mile Road. It still is a huge expanse. And so I would prefer, on both those sides, both the east and the, and the north elevation, to see something to break up that huge white panel that you've got running across there.
How are you going to market this? I'm just curious, what kind of business would you see using this building?
We still see it filling R&amp;D, light industrial use. Typical with other users in the park.
Okay. Other questions or comments?
Been looking at the aerial site map, it sure looks like there's a building on it right now.
So the space that we're referencing is right here. Is there, is that a surface parking lot, or is that a building?
That's 45,000 Helm Street.
Is that a building?
Yes.
So it ends right here, correct?
Yes, it ends. Yes.
Okay, yep, that's consistent with what we got. So there, this area is a parking lot here.
And who's located at 4500?
45,000.
45,000.
It's owned by the same owner. Currently, Intertech is leasing a very small percentage of the building.
Right. So displacing their parking doesn't seem to be a problem.
No. As it sits, the Helm Street building is vastly overparked. They will continue to be overparked after we do this lot split.
Yeah, there's parking behind that building on Helm Street. So, I mean, if you go, yeah, there, it's, that huge parking lot, I don't know who, I assume that that building was anticipated to have a lot more people in it than what's in there now, or something like that.
I make that assumption also.
Yeah, because that parking lot is massive.
We did pull the previous site plans for 45,000 Helm to see, you know, to make sure that we were justified in our parking calculations. And from '87 and then, I think, '98 it was, there was the site plan expansions, and it looks like a number of those parking spaces on the site plan were like in reserve for like additional company vehicle parking or something of that nature. They were reserved spaces where they showed little cars on them. So I think there maybe was a different intention 20 or 30 years ago when that was created, and it just became obsolete.
Yeah, I noticed that on the awning, I think it is, for one of those entrances on the north side of that building, says Johnson Controls.
They were a previous occupant.
I have, I have a feeling.
Well, if there's no additional comments or concerns, are we ready for a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve tentative site plan on 2314-1118 with the comments from the planner, the response from the applicant, and the comments from our township engineer.
Your support?
Support.
Move by Commissioner Pratt, supported by Commissioner Barberina, granting, approving tentative site plan approval for Application 2314-1118. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, well, good luck. We'll see you.
See you next time, with some breakup on the north and east side, right?
Next up is Application 2313-1118, the Ridge Road Industrial Park, and your report.
Great, thank you, commissioners. And so this is a very exciting application to have before you. It is for the, a portion of the Michigan International Technology Corridor, the MITC Corridor, on Five Mile between Beck and Napier, that both Plymouth Township and Northville Township have been working on for years and years and years, and it's really starting to get traction and see the fruits of all those efforts. So the applicant before you tonight is requesting tentative site plan approval for a future industrial park, office, light industrial, research, technology, along the theme of R&amp;D, at the Five Mile and Ridge Road intersection in the southwest corner. And the proposed industrial park would be, would feature nine different industrial users that are speculative at this point. The entire parcel is approximately 133 acres and contains a number of wetlands and woodland areas and flood plain and a portion of the Johnson Creek. So the impacted area is limited to the nine buildable parcels that are shown on this, on the screen, and this would be site condoed. And at this point in time, the applicant is only requesting approval, site plan approval for the infrastructure and the utilities and the general layout of those nine building The next step would be final site plan approval. That would conclude a couple of these outstanding items that are very minor in nature and would address any engineering outstanding items. And then, in the future, as these nine different parcels were to be developed, that individual applicant would come before the commission for site plan, both tentative and final. So approval of this plan is not approval of nine buildings. So approval of this plan is not approval of nine buildings, um, sometime in the future, but it is approval of, um, the park layout and utilities and grading and infrastructure that will eventually come back before the commission for your review. And of course, if there were any special land uses, um, that, you know, were interested in, in being developed on one of these parcels, they would follow the special land use track, go through the public hearing process and all of our standard zoning ordinance processes. And so we are recommending tentative, um, site plan approval this evening. If you have any questions, I'm very happy to answer them and we are quite excited to see this project move forward, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And the engineer report?
Thank you, Commissioner. We have reviewed the above referenced plans set dated November fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen, and received in our office November twentieth, two thousand and eighteen for conformance with Plymouth Township Engineering Standards. We've noted a few minor comments for tentative, nothing that's anything really, um, that's going to stop the, any, any, create any issues. So therefore, we are recommending tentative site plan approval. We've also put a bunch of note, or a bunch of comments on there for final site plan approval just to give the applicant, um, some information that they need to, to be able to move forward with final site plan. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. And the applicant is here? Come up and introduce yourselves.
I have a question, Dave. Where is water and sewer relative to that across the street, across Ridge Road?
We have, there is currently a sewer line that is running along the, uh, eastern side of Ridge Road. There is yet to be a water main that is proposed for a water main to run along the west side of Ridge Road. That water main will have to come up Ridge Road and turn and then go east along Five Mile Road and tie back into the water system. But there is currently a sanitary sewer line running along the east side of Ridge.
And I have, I think, it might be an engineering question, I just, a term that I'm not familiar with. And one of the proposed detention basins, there's, it says proposed forbay. What is that, what is a forbay?
That forbay is a, is a requirement for, um, it, it's used to kind of clean the water. The water flow, uh, stormwater will flow into the forbay first. It has a little bit of, uh, detention time in there where it kind of allows the sediments to settle out before then it goes into the actual detention basin. It's just a, it's just a, a kind of a pretreatment structure for the stormwater.
Okay, thank you. All right, Laura, yours?
Good evening, Commissioner. My name is Jamie Roth, I'm representing Hillside Development.
Once again.
Good evening, my name is Jamie Roth, I'm representing Hillside Development. Any questions, Butterfire?
Okay. Del, do you have anything to add to the report, uh, that we just heard?
Good evening, Jim Butler with PEA. Um, really don't have much to add to it, I mean, it's a hundred and thirty-one acre development. As you can see, it's got a lot of wetlands, it's got a lot of flood plain. It's a very complicated design of the hundred and thirty-one acres. I think we're ending up with just under fifty acres of what you see in green as developable area. If you look at the plan, you'll see two food areas. The one closest to the railroad tracks on the north part is the stormwater management. On the south part is going to be an area that we're going to be modifying the flood plain in there. It's pretty significant, so we're going to create what's called compensatory storage. That's where the storm, the flood will now, so our water will, will jump, will concentrate towards. Now it just kind of goes all through the site, the flood plain line is currently like this. So we're going to raise the site and redefine what the flood plain limits is. So it'll be approved through the Michigan Department of Quality and Energy. It's a pretty exhaustive process.
I would imagine.
Yeah.
Do you have a comment? You look like you're ready.
I have a, I, whenever, and I can't imagine you being surprised, I have a comment. Two things, uh, and one is for Laura, I think on your report, Laura, it says nine. On all the drawings, I only see eight. What, what's with that?
By the railroad track.
There's a.
Oh, you're going to, you're going to eventually do.
I did the same thing.
Yeah, okay. So there's going to be a building on the other side of that railroad track?
Yep, it'll face on Five Mile Road.
Okay. All right, it'll, it'll face, and then the entrance will be off of Five Mile Road.
Five would be on Ridge.
Could, it, because that's my other question. On your, um, uh, drawing, the, the entrance to the other eight is off of Ridge Road.
Yeah.
Ridge Road is relatively narrow there. Well, actually, all the way down there. And I'm just wondering if anybody has thought about either a turn-in lane or a turn, or a bypass lane on Ridge Road?
As a part of our, uh, submittal, we'll have to go through our friends at Wayne County.
Oh, really? You would have to go through Wayne County?
We'll have to.
Oh, no. I just, I, I, I would just, and I'm just putting a B in your bonnet. I would like to see that simply because I know that that, I just drove that road and it is very, very narrow.
Yeah, there's, I, the, the road is definitely going to need improvements.
Yeah.
I've driven that road thousands of times.
I'm sure you have, yeah. It's not part of the township I spend a lot of time in, but that's, um.
You're welcome, anytime.
I, I appreciate that. Those are my two, now, now I see, I, I, somehow I missed that little triangle up there, but, okay.
Pardon my ignorance, but, uh, on the drawings, uh, like on the C drawing, uh, one point oh, one point one, they're all, all different. They, they appear to be of the same thing but show different wetlands. What am I missing there?
On one point one and one point oh? One point one being the overall plan?
Yeah, one point one is zero, and then one point one, one.
One point one is just a, a more detailed section of a particular part of that overall plan.
Okay, and what is the difference between, uh, C three point oh and C four point oh?
Three point oh is just an overall park plan.
Yeah.
Four point oh is the utility plan, just showing where the storm sanitary water would be.
Is anything happening on the Northville side? Is this a larger coordinated effort? I know there's been a committee, it's been going on for a few years.
And there's nothing been proposed yet on the Northville side. There has been with the Michigan Land Bank side on the, uh, east side of Ridge Road. This is working in conjunction with them.
Oh, okay.
I have a question. Do you gentlemen represent Hillside? And are you principal owners of it as well? And do you have much tenant interest right now or any commitments?
Quite a bit, yes.
What do you, what do you attribute, you have an interest but across the street being slow to? Are you smaller in lot size? Pardon me?
You mean in the Northville side versus one?
Yes.
There is significant interest in the Northville side and, uh, John Ding is, uh, coming out of the ground in the spring. But as far as I know, down the, uh, further west piece, there's going to be nothing proposed. Few people have been interested. Most of our interest comes from existing tenant base. We have about a hundred and some tenants locally in Plymouth Township, about a million square feet, so most of our tenants are looking to expand with us.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, are we ready for a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve, uh, part, um, PC number twenty-three thirteen, eleven eighteen for tentative site plan approval, uh, for the, uh, items, uh, listed in the planners' and the, um, and planner's report and the engineering report, uh, to be taken into consideration.
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Pratt and supported by Commissioner Barbara Rena to, uh, approved tentative site plan for twenty-three thirteen, eleven eighteen. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, good luck to you, we look forward to working with you.
Thanks so much.
Okay. Next is the approval of our twenty nineteen, uh, commission meeting dates and the deadlines.
I have a comment. Um, usually we meet on the second Wednesday in December and, uh, the date listed is the third, so do we want to change that?
Right, I'm, I have that noted, it would be December eleventh.
Um, let me just take a look at the calendar here real quick. I thought that, um, because of where the holiday fell into the fourth week, we would still want to hold the regularly scheduled December meeting. If that's not the case, happy to move it.
Yeah, but we've never, never have met that third Wednesday in December. So, yeah, it should, it's just like today is the twelfth, so next year would be the eleventh.
Okay, does the same, um.
I don't know what that does to your submission date, that's.
Oh, we can, we can revise that, um, but then for the month of November, would you like to see the meeting held on the second Wednesday, which would be the thirteenth, as opposed to the twentieth?
Wednesday's Thanksgiving, it's later next year, right?
Thanksgiving is, um, is November twenty-eighth. So the twentieth is not the day before Thanksgiving.
Okay. So we're comfortable with that?
Yeah, just the change to December eleventh and then whatever change you determine for the submission date.
Okay, we will make that change.
And then I was wondering if we wanted to go back to having, um, scheduled work sessions like we used to have? It seems like we've had some struggles getting the meeting dates. In the past, we've always had work sessions scheduled and then canceled them if we didn't need them.
Well, sometimes we've gone a whole year and never have had them.
It really doesn't do any good to schedule them when the majority of them are canceled because I can't imagine any of us making our plans around.
True, but then the.
The possibility of a work session.
Well, we always try to do it a, a month in advance that you would know if that gives you enough time, but then the problem has been, we can't get the room, then we meet on another time and it's, it's been somewhat confusing. But it's open to discussion as to what you folks want to do with it.
I just wanted to bring it up, it's something that we had in the past that we got away from and the past year we've had, I don't know, two or three, maybe four work sessions.
But we kind of scheduled them as we needed them, didn't we?
Right.
Or we would have them after a regular meeting, uh, you know, if the meeting was short, after an hour, hour and a half, we would just say, okay, we adjourn that and then we open up the work session, uh, save the township some money and keep the flow of work going.
You play by ear.
Right. So it's up to you folks.
I just thought I'd bring it up since we've had a few work sessions this year and some challenges getting it scheduled.
I, I, I do really like that recommendation. I, I think it's easier to cancel a meeting than just to try and find a common date that works for everyone, especially because it's not just the planning commission that is taken into account when reserving this room. There's lots of different entities, um, administration at the township that needs to make sure that we can secure the room. So I think it would be beneficial for them to just kind of have that on their calendar as a placeholder and then, you know, three weeks before, we'll know if we're going to have a work session or not and we can kind of just announce that it will be canceled or to go ahead.
Yeah, I think we've used that date also in the past if, um, we needed to have a special meeting for an applicant as well, so then the room was available or reserved for us.
So that would be the first Wednesday of the month? How's everyone feel about that, okay or?
I don't like the first Wednesday.
Pardon?
I don't like the first Wednesday.
You don't? What do you like?
Well, that gives me, that means I'm here twice in, in one week.
Maybe a couple times a year.
If bowls.
If it happens.
Right.
We thank you for your service.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, so do we need a motion? Do we have to approve this formally or?
Yes, we do need to approve it. And if there's any additional stipulations regarding reservation of work session meetings, I would include that too, if that's something you'd like to consider.
So is there a motion?
I have to make it and, and record it?
It's an easy one, folks.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the, uh, two thousand and nineteen planning commission meeting dates as proposed, but with the change that the December eighteenth meeting of two thousand and nineteen will be moved to December eleventh. And the work sessions will be held on the first Wednesday of the month, as needed.
Is there support?
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Barbara Rena and supported by Commissioner Harp, approving said meeting dates. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, Commissioner Pratt opposes, but the motion does carry. Next is Communications, you've given us the monthly report. Does anyone have questions on the monthly report? Is there any other questions or comments? Laura, you have anything that you want to share with us or?
No, just, if there's any specific questions on any of these projects, um, you know, please let us know. Uh, there were a couple of projects that were intended to go before the commission or initially, uh, planned to go before the commission at, uh, tonight's meeting and they were held, um, until the January meeting. And just due to the fact that there were a number of outstanding items, um, and they were asked for, uh, final site plan. And, uh, you know, consistent with trying to limit the amount of conditions that are attached to final site plan and ensure that the commission has proper review of the final plan. They will, we've met with, uh, development and they will be applying at the, um, are coming before the commission in January. So I think that is, um, will result in a, in a better end product.
I think that sounds like a good idea.
Thank you.
And what applicants were those?
There were two cluster housings. The first was Verona Park. Um, and they're, they're on track, um, to button up those outstanding items. And then the other is, um, uh, ponds at Andover. And we have a tentative meeting scheduled next week, um, with that development team to go over some of those items and see if we can get closer.
Is that the one that I mentioned earlier with those large pond on it?
Yes, yes.
I don't see the Powell Road property or the development Powell Road just used to make your.
Oh, that, that's where the, crossing the cell towers.
Oh.
There was that small cluster they were going to put in there.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah. Did that drop away?
Actually, they submitted on Monday for, um, the January meeting. Monday was the, was the deadline for anything in, um, to be considered in January and they did submit to do a cluster housing option there.
This was the parcel that was on the, um, south side of Powell Road?
Correct.
Yeah, I remember that. They did, they were here.
Yeah.
Wasn't it, they, a young guy with his mother, they had owned the property for twenty years or something, very long period?
They submitted for a rezoning and they were approved for their rezoning, I think, uh, over, over a year and a half ago.
Anything else from the commission? Nothing? Okay, is there a motion for adjournment?
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Barbara Rena, supported by Commissioner Pratt to adjourn the meeting at eight-thirty. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, we're adjourned.